Now calling to order, the July 24th El Segundo Planning Commission meeting. And we will begin with roll call.
Commissioner McCavity.
Here.
Commissioner Christian.
Present.
Vice Chair Inga.
Here.
Chair Magai.
Here.
Commissioner Taylor is absent and we have Coram.
All right then, up next, the Pledge of Allegiance, if you all join me.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we typically open up the meeting for public communications. We don't have anyone in the audience today, so we will not open it up. Moving on to the consent calendar, we have one item, and it's to approve the July 10th Planning Commission meeting minutes. Do we have a motion to approve?
I present the motion to approve the minutes from our meeting on July 10th.
Second.
And I'll take votes, Commissioner McCavity.
Aye.
Commissioner Christian.
Aye.
Vice Chair Inga.
Aye.
And Chair Magai.
Aye.
Motion passes for all.
And moving on to the public hearings, an ordinance amending the Smoky Hollow specific plan permitted uses and definitions related to incubator and innovative startup uses. And I believe we have a presentation.
Yes, good evening, Chair Magai and fellow commissioners. The item before you relates to incubator and innovative startup uses in Smoky Hollow. Specifically, we're presenting to you a draft ordinance that will amend the Smoky Hollow specific plan to accomplish two things: establish a definition for incubator and innovative startup uses, and two, add those specific uses to the permitted uses table in the specific plan. You have discussed this topic before, most recently at a study session at your May meeting this year, so I'll try to make the presentation fairly short. This slide here summarizes your discussion and your direction at the May study session. Briefly, you discussed and expressed support for, that we should apply, you expressed support for using a kind of a broad definition that is inclusive for startups in Smoky Hollow. Second, to require the same parking requirements for startups as all other uses in the specific plan. Third, to permit and limit raw materials, but be flexible in administering that. Third, to allow startups by right when they do not use any raw materials, and if they do use raw materials, then to require going through a use permit of some sort. And the draft ordinance before you reflects this direction, and I'll move through the ordinance real quickly. It includes a definition that I alluded to. There is a broad definition for startup uses that is broad enough to be inclusive, and this is essentially the same definition that you saw before with only minor edits since the last time you saw it. It's broad enough, but the definition includes some specific parameters such as a list of permitted types of activities or facilities in a business, a list of the sort of preferred industry types that this definition applies to that we want to attract to Smoky Hollow, and some operational characteristics. And generally, these startup uses are intended to be relatively clean operations, industrial and R and D types of uses that don't have significant impacts, and they're not supposed to be like heavy industrial uses that involve use of substantial amounts of raw materials or hazardous materials and mass scale manufacturing, you know, of materials in bulk. That covers the definition. Moving on to the permit process, the ordinance would add startups to the permitted uses table as I mentioned earlier, in the following manner: they would permit them by right if they used no raw materials, permit them subject to an administrative use permit, an AUP, if they involve use of limited amounts of raw materials, and then if they involve substantial amounts of raw materials or manufacturing in bulk, then they would require a conditional use permit, because those are characteristics of heavy industrial uses, and heavy industrial uses in the specific plan require a conditional use permit. Just a word on the raw materials limits, because we did discuss those at your two study sessions. The ordinance does not establish a specific limit, and that's intentional because it's very hard to land on a specific number or amount of different raw materials. Businesses vary in their operations, the raw materials themselves vary in their potential to cause impacts or nuisances. Instead of setting up a specific limit, each business would be reviewed individually during that AUP process, and limits would be established during that approval process, which is something that the commission specifically kind of discussed at the study sessions. You know, reviewing each case as it comes and then gradually building knowledge and setting limits depending on each case. And some of the factors that we would take into account in setting those individual limits would be the amount of raw material or the proportion of raw material within the, in the space of the business, how it is used or processed or disposed of, and then again, the potential for impacts, you know, such as noise, vibration, glare, heat, dust, and water or air or waste pollution. And that's why some of those terms are included in the definition that we proposed in the ordinance. That is kind of a quick summary of the ordinance and the thinking behind it. Let me go to the next slide. In summary, again, the definition is broad enough and is intended to attract startups to Smoky Hollow. The ordinance provides a clear and efficient review process for these businesses. It is flexible on the limits for raw material and is consistent with a Smoky Hollow vision to attract sort of new creative, cutting-edge technology businesses to Smoky Hollow. These are the findings of approval for approving an amendment to a specific plan or to the zoning code, and we believe based on the information in the report that these findings can be made. And because of that, as a result, we recommend that you open the public hearing, hold a public hearing, and then adopt a resolution recommending city council approval of the specific plan amendment. And that concludes our report. I'll be happy to take questions.
Do we have any questions for staff?
I can't, I remember we talked about this, so it is, I definitely remember that. What did we say when we were talking about raw materials? Because I specifically asked about that rainwater company that's in Smoky Hollow. What'd we decide water was? That was just, that would be a by right one, right?
We, I don't believe we made a specific decision on water when we were having that discussion, but it was in the context of, you know, some raw materials don't really have significant impacts when they're used, and that's also in the staff report. And just for practical purposes, we would not recommend treating water as a raw material in this sort of situation. Yeah, I hope that helps.
Water's not one of the bullets. Water's not one of the bullets under raw materials?
It can be. I'm gonna wait for a second. Yeah, if I may, in the staff report, we presented some definitions found online of what raw materials are and some of the categories, just to help us all kind of get a good sense of what we are talking about. And then in the definitions and in the online information that we found, you know, raw mater, water is essentially a raw material, right? Because we find it in nature and it can be used in many sort of processes, but it's just used ubiquitously. You know, it's used everywhere, so, such as in the manufacture of, you know, drinks, you know. So we thought that water itself, you know, doesn't have sort of impacts that we need to worry about in this context, you know, when we're evaluating a startup use, if they're using water. And we would recommend not treating water as a raw material in this type of situation where we're trying to determine whether to require an AUP or a CUP for a new business in Smoky Hollow. I hope that helps explain the context.
Well, you need to explicitly exclude it, though. I mean, I guess I'm trying to follow along. So we put it, we put it in the definition.
It's not in the definition. We did not add a definition of raw materials. We simply presented some information in the staff report to kind of give you and the public a sense of what are raw materials in general. If it is your inclination to add a definition of raw materials in the code, we can definitely consider that, but it wasn't in the ordinance. It was information presented for, for, you know, our benefit, just so we can have a better deliberation.
But it sounds like if there's other, like, I don't, I wasn't on Planning Commission when this company was approved and worked here or anything like that, but it sounds like if they're using other materials, because they're not just using, I'm just, I feel bad, I'm just using this business as an example, but I've been approached by several members of the community about this specific business, so it's the one in the forefront of my mind. And I know it's over in this area, so I don't know how it was approved, what, which processes it went through and when it came to town, but it sounds like almost every business is going to use water in some capacity, so then if they're using other kinds of materials or something like that, it could fall into the raw material category and push it into needing the additional.
Review process, exactly.
That's exactly it. Thank you. Did I get that right? I mean, I might have said it wrong, so, okay, thanks. And that was my concern, so, but water, you're right, water alone is in everything.
Terrific.
Well, if the city adopts this, this ordinance amendment, how does the city communicate this to innovators and incubators? Only through our website, or is there another way to communicate, to attract those businesses?
I will kind of start on that, and perhaps Eduardo or Michael can jump in, but a few months ago, we did attend a meeting of sort of city staff, executive leadership, and startup businesses, and to talk about their needs. It was sort of a roundtable inviting different businesses to give us sort of their thoughts or concerns about doing business in town and how can we improve things. So that's one way where we can communicate it directly to some of these businesses, basically attend another roundtable and kind of let them know, hey, the city listened, and we've now adopted an ordinance to kind of address the issues we were talking about. Another thing is, the city always publishes the ordinance, or at least a summary, in the local paper. We do post it on our website. Those are some of the ways we get the word out.
And also, I think our colleagues in the Economic Development Department, too, they're more like boots on the ground and really having a lot of dialogue, direct dialogue with the business community, and so, you know, they're, you know, an asset in terms of conveying some of this information as well on our behalf. You know, we will do our part in terms of, you know, getting it out, you know, through our mechanisms, but I think a lot of that one-on-one dialogue does occur with our colleagues in economic development.
And I assume that this information gets passed on to the Economic Development Subcommittee? Do we still have that group? Oh, okay.
I'll just add additional color, nothing much different than was already said, but, you know, Christina and her team, part of why this came up was emanated through economic development and through Christina and Barbara in conversations with the community that is particularly interested in, in this arena, in the R and D space, and in this innovation startup universe that we're struggling to locate or identify where's a proper home in El Segundo. And part of that reason why it was difficult is because the nomenclature in our zoning code just wasn't consistent with the language that they typically use in the industry or in their sector. Heavy industrial and industrial uses, as they are used in our code, are very different than what the industry considers those uses today in the private sector. And so this, a lot of this emanated from conversations with Christina and Barbara and the council member Boiles, who was mayor at the time, who's more intimately involved in that, in that, in those discussions. And so, in addition to what Paul and Eduardo have explained, you know, I'd imagine that, you know, through Econ Dev and the council members who were particularly interested in seeing this happen will also help spread that, that word. And many of the organizations that are already here are paying relatively close attention to, to this, to find out if there's going to be an avenue that they can explore, depending on what category they fall in, the by right, the AUP, the CUP. So it's pretty well-known already, at least within that community. I don't know, and Christina's here, if you have anything to add as well?
Good evening. Christina Revellis, Senior Management Analyst for Economic Development. There are a couple of different avenues that are creative and strategic in our communications efforts throughout our economic development program. We have a close relationship with several of the founders and real estate professionals in the Smoky Hollow area. This is a secret, I guess no longer a secret, as I'm sharing it with you, but we are looking to launch a branding around Smoky Hollow, a logo, a website dedicated to telling the history of that district, the evolution of that area, and in particular, the rich legacy of El Segundo and innovation. And I think this particular initiative that CDD has undertaken is a perfect, I would say, content to share across those channels. Not only the website, but also we have a dedicated digital marketing campaign that targets C-level executives, founders, innovators, that are very keen on looking at specific facilities, specialized facilities, that all of this ties into. So when we're out there communicating with the world of why relocate to El Segundo, or why build your startup and successfully grow into a Fortune 500 corporation, one of those key pillars would be because we have a streamlined planning process, because we have these specialized facilities and the ease of doing business in El Segundo. And then with our collaboration between CDD and Econ Dev, we're able to then communicate that and reach those targeted audiences.
Thank you. Great, thank you. Do we have any other questions from the commission? And I don't have any questions either. Thank you for the presentation. And seeing that we don't have any members of the public here, we don't need to open public comments. Okay, we'll open public comment, and seeing none, I will close public comment. But I think that this, what was presented resolved all of my issues, I think, from our previous discussions. I think that we're moving in the right direction. I like that it's case by case and that we don't have any defined limits, because, you know, with these startups, it's going to be very confusing and, you know, we might misclassify something if we put it hard down on paper. And I do really love, I've always loved the idea of making this kind of an innovation hub and kind of taking acclaim to that here in Los Angeles and the South Bay specifically. So, yeah, this is really, I think, exciting and, you know, driving the goals of the city, so. Any other comments from the dials?
Maybe, just to be completely clear, were there any, like, takeaways from the commissioners from those other study sessions that have not been incorporated or addressed into this?
I would say that, you know, as we all learned more things together, our perspectives kind of got fine-tuned, let's say.
Okay.
Sort of culminating with your direction at the last meeting. So I don't think something was omitted. It's just that everybody learned a little bit more and was able to give more specific sort of opinions or direction.
Okay, just figured I'd ask.
No, and just, I'll just add real quickly, too. I think, you know, I think from a staff perspective, we appreciate that dialogue that we've had, and I think some may think of this as to having taken, you know, quite a bit of time to get to this point, but, you know, do understand, I mean, we do want to, you know, we did a lot of outreach and we did a lot of, you know, you know, research on our end at the staff level that we presented to the commission, as you know, over, you know, two or three different study sessions. And so, and, you know, we had a brand-new commission, so that, you know, we also had to take that into account. So at the end of the day, I think this is something that really, I think, addressed everyone's, you know, commonalities that we had to move forward with this, this type of amendment. But like I said, you know, I just want to express our gratitude from staff, and I hope, you know, we'll continue to do things like this as, as we embark upon other, you know, code amendments, et cetera, and, and, you know, it's that way we have a collaborative effort and we're completely on the same page as opposed to, last thing I want to do is have a staff that's completely on a different page than the commission. So I thank you.
And then I just want to comment, I guess, the skeptical side of me, my concern with something like this is just, I hear, I'm a lawyer, I do boring government work, you know, it's not exciting, I'm not an innovator in any way, shape, or form, I just read the law and interpret it. But I, like, in my head, I'm picturing like an evil Will character, Will Ferrell character from a movie, creating some sinister, I'm sorry, I'm just putting it out there in case anybody in the public is watching that. I do have hesitation within me because of some of the businesses that I know are already here and causing a little bit of a ripple. So I'm just putting that all in your ear. If it's going to be a case by case basis, you know, just like transparency from, I don't know who the businesses that have reached out are and what they're looking for, and the optimistic side of me wants it to be sunshine and roses and people who have great ideas and want to help the world with these startups, but the cynical side of me, I do have hesita, I'm nervous. It's just not my wheelhouse, and I understand that's how El Segundo was built. I have family that has been here a very long time, and I understand what an innovator I have family that has been here a very long time and I understand what an innovator we were back in the day. So that's kind of fun to me, but I am scared because AI, I know, uses a lot of resources to create it, so when I hear things like this, I just, I, I am hesitant because it's very unknown. And what some of the uses could be used for might not be abundantly clear in the beginning. So I'm, that is a comment I have now made.
No, that's understandable, Commissioner McCavity, and I think, I think that is kind of the beauty of the way the ordinance is set up is that, you know, you know, if it's, if it's no raw materials, it's a pretty straightforward thing, it's like, okay, you know, we, it's, it's, obviously there's not going to be any impact. The beauty of it is that if there is some raw material, it's going to go through the AUP process, which eventually gets to you as a, even though it's a receive and file, but it still gets to you and you do have the ability to discuss that and, and bring it up for more further discussion. Or it requires a full-on CUP, which also gets to you as well. So, so yeah, so there's that level. It's like, if it's, if it's pretty straightforward and it's going to be obviously no impact, no raw materials, you know, we can go ahead and allow for that to go in. But any use of raw materials then has those thresholds that could, that would bump it up to the Planning Commission with at least a receive and file.
From my review of it, I didn't see any, and this probably isn't something you would normally include in, in an ordinance or anything like this, but, you know. I sound like I'm in a cartoon, like, purposes of good and not evil or like, I just want to make sure, like, the businesses are attracting, I don't know, have, are going to have positive impacts on.
I, I've never seen language like that. Aside from this, we can certainly study that.
I was saying, I guess I'm just putting it in your ear when you're reviewing, especially the ones that wouldn't come before us because they're by right. It, it just, it feels very new to me and I just, there's, I just feel like we're in a funky climate all the way around and I just want to make sure we're just getting the right kind of people.
Part of the reason why we suggested that category of by right is because even today, even if you don't call it incubator use, it would just fall under the category as light industrial and it would be permitted by right today. I hear the concern and I think there's maybe something that we can continue to research and study to address some of the concerns that you're raising to, to, you know, Commissioner Christian's point, the previous commission also had concerns, maybe not of the, you know, the do-good specific, you know, type of concern, but just the volatility of certain chemicals and reactions and.
And the uncertainty of the industry and the strain on our, you know, is it even compliant with where California sits in, in our, you know, what we're trying to do globally to keep the earth around for future generations? So I just want to be on the record, having said all that.
I think maybe there's a good future discussion on those, along those lines. And also, maybe there's a good future discussion as it relates to the land use element update in general, that that, that's, it's more qualifiable and it's more, you know, sort of a subjective conversation that might be helpful in the land use element update that we're going through as well in terms of intent and purpose and vision and what are we trying to achieve as a community? I think that's maybe where it will fit better.
Great, love it.
Okay, any other comments? If not, would someone like to make a motion?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 2965, recommending city council adoption of the proposed ordinance and a specific plan amendment.
Is there a second? I'll second it.
I'll take votes, Commissioner McCavity.
Aye.
Commissioner Christian.
Aye.
Vice Chair Inga.
Yes.
And Chairman Guy.
Aye.
Motion passes for all.
Okay, moving on, there's no new business and there's no unfinished business. Can, do we have a report from the Community Development Director?
Nothing tonight, Chair.
Reports from the commissioners?
Um, I don't remember the name of our meeting, but we met. Major Events Ad Hoc Committee. So we had our first meeting and it was fun, I'm excited. I was texting Michelle as I was leaving with even more ideas that might be crazy, but it's okay, that's what it was for. And so we are on it with the eye towards the World Cup first, the Regional, the World Cup, and then hopefully just go out to the Olympics. So we'll be meeting again either monthly or bimonthly, I'm not sure because I did jet out a little early, but it's exciting and it'll be great. So if people ask you if it's on our radar, it is.
Oh, good, good. It does sound exciting, you still look excited about it.
That I can get behind, that sounds fun.
Um, any other reports? I have.
You know, what, sorry, before, and it just got me thinking, what's also on our radar is, just to put this out there to the commission and to the general viewing audience, August 13th, we have a community workshop regarding the land use element. So the, so keep an eye out, we'll be posting that on our website as well as getting that, pushing that information out through our various forms of media. But I wanted to just let you guys, let the commission know that that is forthcoming and, you know, we are embarking upon, as everyone knows, we're embarking upon this land use element update. So we had a meeting with the TAC a couple of weeks ago, or maybe almost a month ago. So we're getting, getting ready and so we're starting that off with the community meeting on 13th.
Great, thank you. And before we get to the city attorney reports, I'd like to welcome our new city attorney, David King, who's replacing Joaquin, but do you want to give a little introduction?
Yeah, good evening, commissioners. Yeah, Joaquin gave notice a couple of weeks ago that he was switching firms, so we wish him well. I was previously the Assistant City Attorney for El Segundo from 2014 to 2020, 2021, thereabouts. I taught full-time at Loyola Law School, which is my alma mater, and then ECI, EC Irvine Law School. And now I'm back to practice, so I'm happy to be here. I do have a little bit of history with the city. I know some, some of the planners, Eduardo and Paul in particular. And yeah, I'm happy to be back, so look forward to working with you all on a go-forward basis.
Great, welcome back, welcome. And do you have anything to report besides the introduction?
Nothing to report, Mr. Chair.
Um, and that concludes our agenda and I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone.